The work session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Patsy Co. Johns?
Here.
Rachel Wise?
Here.
John Witzel?
Here.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Present.
And representing Commissioner Bloomstead, Deputy Commissioner Brian Holstead.
Present.
All present.
Thank you Denise. It is a great sadness that I announced that Commissioner Bloomstead is absent due to the passing of his mother last night. The Commissioner has designated Deputy Commissioner Holstead to serve as its designated representative for this meeting. Please keep the Commissioner and his family in your thoughts. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room and on the south side of this door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are done speaking. And please turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. In regards to Commissioner's report and agenda overview, Deputy Commissioner Holstead, would you please deliver the Commissioner's report and agenda overview, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I remind all the board members about consent agenda items and if there's any items you want to remove from the consent agenda or need information on, please complete the form and give it to Ryan For. The second item is the Report on Rules and as you can see, the first item listed there are the Personnel Rules, which are an action item for the board this meeting. The other rule is still pending at the Attorney General's office. So, that's the update on the Report on Rules. For Board Policies and Policy Research, I'd ask Ryan For to come forward and report on the activities under that topic.
Last month, I was really excited to share with you all of your involvement in the National Association of State Boards of Education, NASB, in thinking about their upcoming national conference in Denver in October. And there's some additional things I want to share to brag on you all about as a board and as individuals. Some other, a couple of other board member participation points that I think are worth noting that relate to the national conference are Patrick serves as a member of the Government Affairs Committee for NASB and Lisa serves as a member of the Public Education Positions Committee. And so, it's really great to have Nebraska represented so well on those committees and the leadership and in the award structure as well. And I think, I think last month I shared that Commissioner Bloomstead was recognized, will be recognized as Policymaker of the Year. And also, Pat Tim will be recognized at the conference with a Distinguished Service Award from NASB. And so, as long as you all keep doing great things and putting your names out there, I'm going to come up here and brag about this board's involvement in that organization. So, many of you, if not nearly all of you are planning to attend that, I shared some information about finances and the availability of those last month to feel comfortable about being able to travel between state funds and NASB grant funds that we'd had in existence from projects. I'll move then to the second item, or actually the first sub-bullet item under this agenda item, and that is with respect to the External Review of the Strategic Plan. When the board adopted the Strategic Plan two years ago, one component of that was an external review process, third party to the agency and third party to the board. And so, over the past few months, the Commissioner's been working with President Witzel to think about where that would land and what that process would look like. And so, the agency has contracted with the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation to be one part and the major part of that process for the External Review. We chose the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation because of their interests in public education and in education, also because of a couple of tenets that they are good at, and that is data-driven decision-making and also stakeholder engagement. And so, thinking about those two components being important for a strategic plan were important in us thinking about contracting with the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation. One thing that we really appreciated as we started those conversations then was their immediate recognition to subcontract, if you will, then with an individual to serve as a point person for that work. And through conversations, further conversations, then the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation considered and will be thinking about even another third party, if you will, that is at another arms-length then from the board and from the agency in conducting that work. So, we've been very intentional about working with them to set that up so that it is a true third-party External Review. Last week, the Commissioner met with President Witzel and Vice President Tim. Also, she serves as the Chair of the Strategic Planning and Improvement Committee to meet with the contractor to discuss some of the early planning elements and to consider how we wanted to proceed moving forward. And it was very evident from their conversations, especially Patricia Tim indicating that we needed to have a presentation to the full board about this process at the start, knowing that much of the work of it will come back to the Strategic Planning Committee, but also knowing that we're going to want to make sure that there are regular and intentional updates to the full board on a regular basis. And so, this morning, I shared some information about to the degree that I shared with you all here on behalf of the Commissioner with the Strategic Planning Committee. And today, then, for the work session, we have asked the contractors to share some additional information with you. And so, from the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation, we have Mary Jo Pankoke with us and also then their contractor, Ann Herman. And so, I'd ask them to join me at the front at this time. So, Mary Jo is going to share some information with you about the relationship with the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation and is going to share some more specific information with you then about the project, give you some things to think about then over the course of the next few weeks and start talking about a process to outline moving forward. The goal is to have this review completed by December. And one thing I've appreciated about the work so far is that on a relatively short timeline, they've been able to outline what that could look like in a reasonable and yet rigorous process. So, I'll turn it over to Mary Jo.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. And thanks to all of you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. We're very excited to be part of this third-party review of your strategic plan and to be part of a public-private partnership with the department and with private funders. This was a role that the Nebraska Children and Families Foundation was intended to fill when we were created back in 1997, to work in partnership with state agencies and to help state agencies by working together achieve better outcomes for children in Nebraska and to use public-private partnerships as a way to leverage private funding to increase the resources available to support the work. We've been playing this role with the Department of Health and Human Services for over 20 years, helping them improve safety and well-being outcomes for children. And we know that education outcomes are critically important as well. And we think that there's great potential for growing our partnership with the department and increasing opportunities for public-private partnerships focused on education outcomes. And we can build on our success with the Sixpence Early Childhood Endowment. This is an example of a very successful public-private partnership involving both the department and our foundation. The $40 million in state funds has been matched with $20 million in private funds that we raised and the $20 million has increased to about $27 million now. And based on the evaluation results, we know that we're improving outcomes for at-risk children. So, we really want to build on this success. And we know that there are private funders that are very interested in education and supporting good education outcomes for children. So, we think that there is great potential for additional public-private partnerships that are focused on school-aged children. We have a good start in the early childhood arena, but we think there's room for growth in regards to school-aged children. So, we look forward to continuing conversations with Commissioner Bloomstead and his staff about growing our partnership and increasing opportunities for public-private partnerships. Now, we're here today to talk about the third-party review, but I just wanted to provide that broader context for our work together. As Ryan said, we've subcontracted with Ann Herman. She's working on several projects for us and she will be our lead on this project. And she's jumped right in and has really gotten things organized and I think off to a good start. So, I'll turn it over to Ann now to talk more about the plans for the review.
Sure. Thank you. Hello, for those of you, I know I've met a few of you in other circumstances, but nice to see everyone. I shared with Ryan and Commissioner Bloomstead at the very first meeting how impressed I was with the work that had been done historically a few years ago on the strategic plan, but also the foresight to set up a purposeful review and build that into the process. I've done this work with several organizations around the world and I'd say about 90% of them omit that very important step of let's check in and see how things are going. So, that's really the basis of how we're going to approach this third-party review. We're going to be working to identify what has worked so far along the path, what hasn't worked, what has changed, right? One of the biggest predictors of success in any arena is adaptation to new things, knowing new things, learning new things. When the strategic plan was originally conceived, I don't think we really understood ESSA to the extent we maybe do today and hopefully will continue to do in the future. But it's really important that we take a moment to pause, we gather input and insight from this group and the key stakeholders on the staff and the team. We know many, we've got many new faces and key roles at the department, so that's important as well. And any of the community stakeholders that we see, we feel we need to engage. So, there'll be a series of different ways to engage folks, through surveys, through one-on-one interviews, through potentially group meetings or facilitated dialogues, to get input, again as I said before, on really what's working to date, what hasn't worked to date, and then what kind of things do we need to work on, adjust, or even modify within the plan, should that be where the team and the board decide to go. So, with that, I want to pause for any questions.
Board members have any questions? Seeing none, or, excuse me, Pat?
I don't think there's anyone that's more committed to seeing this review happen than I am. I've thought from the very beginning, this was an important part of the strategic plan. I just guess at this point, I'm a little confused that I haven't seen any numbers for the cost of the engagement here. I haven't seen any credentials for the organization or the individual that's going to do the, you know, that you're subcontracting with. I don't know whether there's been an attempt to look at, you know, do an RFP to see whether anybody else was available. So, if I'm going to vote to approve this in the near future or support this, and I do support very strongly what we're trying to get done here, I need a lot more information.
So, Ryan, would you speak to the contract and the cost that is associated with this?
Mm-hmm. So, the contract with the foundation is less than $50,000 and so, that was why it hadn't come before the board. And with respect to credentials, certainly, we have those and can share those and would.
Well, I would just say that, you know, this is very important, whether the contract's for less than $50,000 or not. I feel that, you know, we should see the contract and have more information. Thank you.
Sure.
And I appreciate certainly, Pat, I believe, and I could be mistaken, it happens, I believe that we discussed this previously at a committee level and I believe we reported that out previously at a board meeting level. I think, I can't remember which meeting, but it has been brought forward that from the perspective of a committee discussion and from the perspective of reaching out with Nebraska Children and Family Foundation for that process. It was not discussed to go for, it was discussed to go in that direction because of the scope of the work being smaller at that time. So, I know at committee level, we had a discussion. I know that we reported it out. We'd have to go back and look at the dates and the time and some of those, but, Pat, it was before us previously. Just can't remember when. So, we have had this discussion.
Can I just respond that I think if you check the minutes, I don't believe that the name of the entity involved here was brought to the board. I certainly don't remember it.
Yes, Molly?
I just wanted to say, it's a pleasure to meet you in person. The Children and Family Foundation has a great reputation and I personally, as one of the eight board members, am very glad we have a third party that is not associated to do an objective appraisal. And in looking into your background of your foundation, I just wanted to thank you for all you do to support children and to empower every child, every student, every day. And in reflection of your hire, you're being hired, I do trust management to make good choices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Any other comments? Thank you so very, very much.
Before I go, I wouldn't do my job if I didn't get started. So, I have more.
Okay.
I discussed this with both Ms. Tim and Mr. Witzel last week and I had, I've come with some questions that I'd like to leave you with so that you can start to have a think about how would you respond to these questions. I'm not going to ask you for your responses today, but in the coming weeks, you will be engaged and your insights and your thoughts and your reflections will be gathered as part of this process. Obviously, you are key stakeholders in the process and I'd be remiss if I didn't get started right away. So, I'm going to give these to Ryan to share. And if you have any questions, I'm sure you can be in touch with me or Ryan as you need to. So, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd ask Lane to come forward to kind of give you a brief reminder of AQuest, the recollection that this was last fully done in 2015. So, he's going to provide a PowerPoint of a brief overview of what AQuest was and what we're planning on this year and have kind of a reminder session plus helping you grasp possible conversations that need to occur between now and the end of this year with AQuest. So, Lane, if you would, please do your presentation.
Absolutely. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm so excited to be here to talk to you about some of the updates we've made to our accountability system, especially since the passage of our ESSA plan. And so, I have three basic objectives and the PowerPoint is coming around to you so that you can see it a little closer. But the three things that I really want to do and be able to share with you today are just a high-level overview of some of the updates that we've made to the AQuest classification system and provide some key dates for you on when this is going to roll out this fall. I want to talk to you about the stakeholder feedback that we've gotten and specifically about the stakeholders that we've been reaching out to. We've been really busy in who we've been speaking to over the last several months. And then the last thing is to foreshadow a little bit of the future and to share with you some of the structures that we're putting in place right now that will enable us to have a broader, bolder, better system, even more broad, even more bold, even better system than we have right now. So, just a little bit of context, you all know this, but one of the things that I think makes my job a lot easier as the Director of Accountability is that our system, the way that it was established by the State Board and NDE back in 2014 and 15, is both a classification and designation system and a framework of support. And that's different than what a lot of our peers and a lot of other states do, which is classification and accountability are on one side and school improvement is on the other side and they're disconnected. So, I think that we are set up and poised to even make this bond and classification system and framework of support even more cohesive. So, excited to be in this position where we have both of those things ready. And now is just a really exciting and ideal time to change. So, there have been three big pieces that have necessitated changes to the accountability system. The first of which was that every student succeeds act plan. So, new federal regulations, new federal requirements and mandates that ask us to think a little bit differently about accountability while still maintaining the fundamentals of AQuest. So, in addition to ESSA and our ESSA plan, we have revised college and career readiness standards and assessments. So, as you all know, we have those new assessment cut scores, we have the ACT in high school and that's just been a lot of change from 2014 and 15 when we ran this classification system the first time. And the last thing is it's really good timing to follow the folks talking about the vision and direction because that also has necessitated changes. So, in order for us to meet the ambitious goals that you set out, we have to think differently about accountability and make some changes to our accountability system. And all of that work, all three of those things are founded in our mission to lead and support the preparation of all Nebraskins. And you're going to hear that word "all" from me and then into the future as we keep and continue the conversation about equity. So, there's a lot going on on this slide, but I want to just highlight a few of the key dates here, things for you to remember and to look forward to. So, the first is in September of last year, this time last year, it's hard to believe, but you all granted the Commissioner the authority to submit our ESSA plan. In March, we brought together a group of stakeholders and said, here's what ESSA is asking us to do. Here's what we will not budge on and things that are foundational to AQuest. What do you think and how can we make this work for our state and especially for our students? So, that group of stakeholders represented ESUs, board members, local school board members, principals, superintendents, teachers from a variety of schools. We had a really impressive dialogue and very excited about some of the things that they are suggesting to us that we'll talk about in a little bit. So, between September of 2017 and June of 2018, there was a lot of feedback and discussion about our ESSA plan and finally with that approval on June 6th of 2018. So, we did a little cartwheel and then we decided we needed to get right back to work because it was a success to get it approved and now it's the real thing is actually making it happen, right? Throughout the past several months, July and into August, we've been working really hard to get out to our stakeholders. And I'll share a little bit of the list of the stakeholders that we've been reaching out to, sharing this discussion and soliciting feedback from them. And then, in the next few months, from October to about December, we're looking for a rollout of many things. So, our new classification and designations for federal accountability, the comprehensive support improvement schools, and that will happen in December. Additionally, we have a new NEP that will be rolled out in December. So, that's a one-stop shop for all data that our schools will need. And Matt Hastings and his team have been working tirelessly to make that cleaner and more user-friendly for our schools. So, a lot is going to happen between now and December when we make those public, including reaching out to our schools and sharing this information even more. So, I do want to tell you that we've been working really hard getting out to our stakeholders. So, sharing this information, learning from them, asking them for feedback. We conducted two statewide webinars and had quite a few participants with educators, administrators, and teachers. We did another webinar with ESU administrators and personnel, met with our partners at NSEA and NASB and got some good feedback and I'm very excited to explore and see how that partnership can even develop further. The Metro Omaha Education Consortium, or MOEC, had some great thoughts and tiny technical pieces that were easily fixable into our system. And then we've been working really hard to get to some of those populations that have been historically underserved. And so, we have reached out to the Urban League of Nebraska and I think there's, again, some really exciting opportunity to partner with them, to share services and have that community relationship in Omaha. The Latino-American Commission, great opportunity for some potential statewide listening tour with families who are Latino or Hispanic. And then, working really hard with our Native American tribal representatives as well. Just to keep you updated, we have a few things that are coming up. We're going to be meeting with NERCSA. So, we have both MOEC as the kind of, you know, Omaha, bigger city school representatives and then make sure, making sure that we get to our NERCSA, the Rural Community Schools Association, to get their thoughts as well. And then we have some parent engagement sessions planned as well. So, as you recall, with our system, your call to us and your charge to us was to create one system. And so, I want to emphasize to you that we have one system that is aligned, the indicators are aligned, and there are two steps. So, what will happen in the fall, we're there already, once we get this data, we're going to be doing two things. We'll classify schools, so giving those schools that ranking or that rating of excellent, great, good, and needs improvement. And this is the first time that that's been done since 2015, in addition to designating schools specifically this year for comprehensive support and improvement. And so, I'll actually skip ahead just a little bit and come back quickly, but you'll see how that designation pans out here. I moved ahead a little bit to the slides, but what you'll see is that the comprehensive support and improvement schools, those are schools that will be supported by federal funds and that's an ESSA designation. So, those are the lowest 5% of Title I schools, high schools with graduation rates below 67%, and schools with consistently low-performing subgroups. So, that will be the focus of our designation in the fall, in addition to those classification of excellent, great, good, and needs improvement. So, backing up, I know I'm all out of order, just to show you about where we are, we did a lot of work on this high-level policy decision area. So, that was coming to you and getting your approval of chronic absenteeism and really the structure of our ESSA plan and how that was, how that changes and adapts and updates AQuest. So, that high-level policy decision, that all happened really last fall and into early spring of 2018. We're now moving into this transition stage where we're looking at our business rules and developing those business rules and getting a lot of stakeholder feedback. We had an external third-party reviewer for those business rules and that's really the nuts and bolts of how we take data and get those classifications for our schools. And so, that modeling is going to occur throughout this fall as well. Very quickly, I want to show you just the way that we've set ourselves up to add to AQuest into the future. So, this is very difficult to read, but it's bigger on the next page. So, what I do want to tell you is that we have taken the indicators that you put your stamp of approval on. So, the progress towards English language proficiency and chronic absenteeism and in addition to, I should say, all of those indicators that we've already had in our accountability system. So, those measures of progress, the measures of growth, improvement, and non-proficiency, as well as science being pulled out there as well. And all we've done to just change this a little bit, one of the biggest and most important pieces of feedback that we got from stakeholders in March was it's confusing for us to have an accountability system that does not have tenants mentioned in it at all. Okay? So, is there a way that you, this is people talking, our stakeholders sharing with us, is there a way you can orient our accountability system by those tenants? And we said, sure. So, here's what we came up with. What you'll see is that we have taken those indicators, no new indicators other than the ones that were approved in our ESSA plan, and we've just placed them under the six tenants of AQuest. And what you'll see is that there are blanks, there are areas that we don't have any indicators in there. And so, what that does is sets us up and creates a framework where we can get input, we can get feedback, and we can add to that into the future. So, I just wanted to share that with you and what that does is it helps us set up a system where our indicators are tied to the systems of support and structures of support that we have. So, next steps, I know I'm reaching my time limit, a few next steps, we want to just make sure that we're sharing this out and how our classifications are going to occur with our schools. So, we want to make sure we're transparent with schools and sharing, this is what a classification means and this is what's next. This is how we're going to support you. This is how we're going to support you. We're looking at those supports of schools, so partnering with our ESUs and thinking about technical assistance that we can provide or professional development that we can collaboratively provide to needs improvement schools. And then thinking about the best practices. So we've been working in our priority schools for three years now. What best practices from those can we apply to these needs improvement schools on scale? Another really exciting thing that also involves Matt Hastings' team is this idea of peer schools. So we're thinking about how we can better tailor and target supports, and we're looking at how schools are similar to each other, and if we have an excellent school and a needs improvement school that are similar, how can they learn from each other and what can we apply from the excellent to the needs improvement? Bless you. Looking at a lot of discussion around the accreditation system and how we can better align the accreditation system with the accountability system. And then the last piece is just constantly iterating. So engaging with our stakeholders to think about the future and what we could do to improve our accountability system.
Thank you, Lane. I know this is at a high level, and again, this was designed to remind us all of AQuest and what all has happened in the last two and a half years in that regard. Keep in mind that when we did AQuest the first time, we were using NESA scores. We no longer have NESA. We have the College and Career Standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics. You set the cut scores for math this year, so in the sense of we raised the bar. We've also shifted at the 11th grade to have a college admission test, ACT, so that's a big change from last time. The EBA is still utilized. We added the indicators of chronic absenteeism to the model through the ESA plan, as was the English language learners that was not there the last time with AQuest. So I think at this point, there's still lots of work to do. There is still discussions to have. I know that strategic planning had a conversation about all of this at its meeting. There was also discussion, if you saw there, Rule 10 accreditation and that work that's ongoing. So I think we just wanted to give you a high-level picture of where it is at the moment, the things that are going to have to happen yet this fall before the end of the year, and what Lane's labeled AQuest 2.0 is actually delivered. So, Mr. Whitzel, I'll certainly take any questions anybody has.
Thank you.
I have an easy question for you. You talked about the, you talked about the key stakeholders that you consulted with, and you mentioned that there were some webinars. And these first, one, two, three, four, five, seven groups, were those all webinars or were just a couple of them webinars? And your upcoming ones, are those where you're actually meeting with them or are they a webinar?
So the webinars were only for the educators. So we did two webinars, and that was for principals and superintendents.
Oh, okay.
And then the ESUs as well, and the others were in-person meetings.
Okay.
So Maureen, the tribal consultation. Rachel was involved with the commissioner, our meeting with the tribal leaders and the tribes, not the school officials, but the tribal people. So that was an important engagement. It's a starting point. There's lots of work that still needs to be done on engaging the tribal community and those leaders. So that was done in person. I'm sure Rachel can speak to the in-depth work and the long time that was, but that would be an example of some of the stakeholder engagement that you as boardman, Rachel, assisted with, so.
Yes, Molly.
Lane, we're so lucky to have you in charge of accountability. Thank you for all your work. I'm going to refer to the key stakeholder consultation as well. I would just hope in your upcoming meetings, you've targeted student input. I don't see any place here where you've got organized student consultation. And the second thing I was going to bring up is the second to last page about designation levels of support. What I really like about how you've integrated ESA with AQuest is it isn't just the comprehensive support of our priority schools, it's that targeted support and improvement that doesn't matter whether you're great, good, or needs improvement. There are pockets that need to be targeted to improve. And I also like that if you have a consistently low-performing subgroup, you won't be excellent. I think that will encourage our school districts to really empower those low-performing groups. And as you're doing those levels of support, I was just curious, are you dealing at all with any targeted support of at-risk kids that are possibly adjudicated or in foster care or highly mobile? Brian, yes?
Well, Molly, in response to your last question, yes, the commissioner, myself, several others at the department, we've had ongoing meetings with the Department of Health and Human Services and the probation, dealing with the students who are in the juvenile court system. There's been a lot of work trying to improve that system, to improve the information sharing and all of that, so that's ongoing. Lane's slide shows that you mentioned targeted support. That doesn't happen this year, that will come next year as part of the ESA plan requirement, so the targeted support. But we want everyone to understand now that even though you may be excellent, there is still areas you may have to improve on, which is the whole focus of AQuest. It's not just about needs improvement, it's about all of the schools working to get better. So part of this is finding peers that can help and assist. That was part of the original discussion with AQuest about the matching schools. Who has best practice? Because that was one of the items. Matching those people with people who say they need help in that particular area. So that's part of the work that's ongoing. And again, with AQuest, we all knew this is going to continue to improve. So in that regard, like I said, this presentation was just kind of remind everybody where we've been and what's going on since then.
And with that targeted, the targeted levels of support, even though it's not starting now, we are introducing that multi-tiered system of support, and I imagine that will integrate with the targeted subgroups. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Rachel?
Yes, thank you, Lane, for the presentation. I guess I really have a question around your slide on the classification of AQuest 2.0. And I believe you said that we really only have indicators in those areas that are quantitative. My understanding, unless something's changed, the EBA is an important part of our full classification process. And unless something's changed, the classification process is two elements. One would be more of a survey qualitative EBA process, the other being the quantitative indicators. And I think those always should be displayed together because we do have indicators across the board that the EBA picks up as a part of that process, as opposed to just the indicators that are here that are more of the quantitative indicator. So I think from my perspective, because I believe those elements are both very important as a part of the process, that we show both. So I guess that's where, when you showed this page without some of the other indicators, I think there's more to this story, and I think we maybe should come back and revisit the full story to show the full picture of the classification process in Nebraska that includes both qualitative and quantitative indicators.
Any other? Patrick?
I'd agree with Rachel on that issue, and I'd also agree with Molly on what she said about, I think, enhancing the excellent qualifications, you know, if you've got a subgroup that's not performing. I want to go to the, you mentioned aligning with accreditation system. What are you talking about there?
Well, Mr. McPherson, I think that's the work that's ongoing, both in strategic planning, it came up in teaching and learning about Rule 10 accreditation and AQuest. There's been lots of discussion by the board. We're kind of getting ahead of the strategic planning committee's report out, but they had a discussion today about maybe there's a need for a retreat of this board to fully talk about accreditation in AQuest and what are the policy decisions that need to be made in Rule 10. So I don't want to get.
Well, and I understand that that's probably where it's going to go, but, you know, when we have 244 school districts and over 1,000 schools in the state, 85 schools or better are needs improvement, and we, our accreditation process goes through the process every five years or so and ends up with no school on probation or no warnings or nothing for these schools, there's something wrong. And, you know, whether it's a matter of changing Rule 10 to reflect that if you're a needs improvement school, you ought to have a, you ought to have an accreditation review every two years or every one year, something needs to be done there. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, when you start talking accreditation, it doesn't seem to be working for me very well when you've got 244 school districts and no school is on any kind of probation regarding accreditation. Thank you.
Rachel?
If I can just speak to that a little bit, I think that it's important to look at the sequence of processes that have been happening in just the past couple of years. One was the transformation of a new accountability system. The other was a strategic policy decision and position this board took to integrate accountability into Rule 10, which brought it into accreditation. That had to be done in a short time period to move those processes forward. So this board, this board did not take the time to really delve into Rule 10 and accreditation at that period of time. And then ESA came in, and I think this board, from a policy perspective, felt it was important to have one accountability system. And so we had to work, and the team here has done an amazing job in working to meet federal expectations with the tenor of the expectations that this board set for accountability, and I think they've done that very well, and I think we're moving in that direction. But now is the time. And I think that's, Lane, what you were alluding to, and I think when Pat reports out, you'll hear that this board is now moving forward to integrate those processes in a more effective manner going forward. So I think the board, if you look back at the work over the past few years, we've made a lot of progress. And some of that progress was made in steps that had to be immediate. We needed to put accountability somewhere, and this board determined that at some point it needed to integrate with accreditation. We made that step, but now it's time to really develop more in depth that process.
For the record, I don't disagree with you.
For the record, thank you, Mr. McPherson.
Patsy?
Working with that Equity Committee that I'm working with, with NASB, there was a very interesting idea that was brought forward that I thought might be worth mentioning, and that is about our sub-levels and how we define those. And this is a group of people from around the United States, and they said, we've been dividing those sub-levels in the same way for years and not really changing our success rate that much. And so they said, perhaps we, in our discussion, they said, perhaps we need to look at that in just a different way and make the subgroups even smaller. So how are we really, or where are we really not being successful in getting kids to move on to another level? And so that means that maybe you're going to, or we're going to have to break those subdivisions down a bit more.
Thank you, Patsy. I see no other further questions. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Board members, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Vice President Tim, please report on the Policy Committee meeting.
The Policy Committee has no action items for this meeting. We have one discussion item.
The Policy Committee has no action items for this meeting. We had one discussion item. We discussed the four-year review of State Board Policy Statement S1, non-discrimination and equal education opportunity in schools. We're continuing our discussion, and we're conferring with staff for recommended revisions, and we'll bring that to the board at a later date. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia. Rachel, please report on the Legislative.
I'm going to have Brian bring copies. Okay. Thank you. Brian, step forward as well. The Legislative Committee has the draft that is being handed out right now of our legislative and regulatory priorities. And this is for your information, and I'm going to have Brian walk us through this document just a little bit. But just to give you a little bit of an update on what the committee is doing, this is what we've put together. This will come back forward to you in October for adoption, but we are continuing to gather input from various stakeholders, and so we want you as stakeholders, for those not on the committee, to provide input. So there clearly could be some changes to this document that you'll see in October, and that's the intent, but we'll be taking action in October. The next step after this, the committee will be setting up a plan that we have for the fall to continue to do some outreach in communicating out on what the legislative and regulatory priorities for 2019 are for the State Board. So with that in mind, turn it over to Brian to kind of walk you through each of these particular areas, and any of the committee may respond to your questions that you may have. So Brian?
Thank you. Brian Halsted, Deputy Commissioner, Division of Agency Support and Services. The four-page document that you have in front of you is aligned with the first three pages, largely legislative priorities, and the last page encompassing regulatory priorities, excuse me, three pages. And we start out with the opening paragraph that starts right from your strategic vision and direction and what we're attempting to accomplish with the priorities that are being established. And the priorities are identified by theme topics. So as you can see, the first is behavioral and mental health is the broad topic area, and the board is, from the committee, speaking from the big picture issue of what legislation should be looking at and doing, and then lists out in particular bullet points of things in legislation we'd be looking for the legislature to do or others to support the legislature doing. So I'm not going to read to you from the very specifics, but that's the whole idea. This very first one, the State Board Legislative Committee, I think they may have reported it last, they held a stakeholder engagement session at Administrator Days. A lot of this that you're seeing today was in that document. They asked for input on it. In the room, the first topic, behavioral and mental health, everybody said that's a priority. So in the sense of, it's listed here first just because B comes first alphabetically, but I wanted you to understand that what the Legislative Committee has been doing has also been reaching out and getting input. Now, we also understand that Administrator Days, that's a very specific audience. There's a broader audience that needs to get input on this, but that was one of the areas. And what you'll see there in some of these items that are listed, you're also going to be able to see a few of these items as we go through because the Budget and Finance Committee is bringing forth the biennial budget request of the department. So many of these legislative priorities are also in the biennial budget requests that you're required to submit. The second theme area is college career and civic readiness, after last month's discussion about not just defining civic readiness and civic engagement, but the whole broader topic. But here, the board is supportive of legislation that includes a comprehensive approach to defining and measuring civic readiness that's aligned to the social studies standards, and has monitoring and ensures adherence of revised statutes through State Board-established regulations instead of criminal penalties is largely the topic there. So in the sense of you working with the legislature to update that and ensure that the activities of ensuring schools are adhering is done through rules and regulations and the Department of Education. The third topical area is early childhood education, and again, it's about high-quality early childhood and providing some flexibility. The two bullet points here, you should recognize because they are two bullet points from last year's legislative priorities that did not get accomplished in this last legislative session. When you flip the page over to page two, the category of equitable and value-added and alignment of services and supports is a topical area that this board has been engaging in. You've done work that actually provides value and system. You've done work that actually provides value and systems to school systems that's far more efficient and effective than how it was done before. A prime example is NWEA is now the contractor for the delivery. That comes with their maps that all school districts get at no cost to the school districts. Aligning resources, how delivering it at the state level can provide effectiveness and efficiency. So there's numerous items listed there. Several of them are in your strategic vision and direction. There are also budget issues that are what the Budget and Finance Committee will be speaking to you later this afternoon. There's a topical area that everybody knows about and everybody's talking about, school finance and school organization. It does not have any bullets over it, but it is a recognition that school finance, property tax relief is a ongoing topic, and that's a placeholder for having and ensuring that there is both a stable, reliable, and equitable system of funding the education system. The next topical head is school safety. And again, that's been a priority both now at the state and also at the national level. So addressing coordination and sharing of information and resources that address issues pertaining to school security and safety is the bullet point listed there. And finally, the last one is workforce development. Again, focusing on career readiness, career opportunities, connections of schools and local communities and businesses, providing resources and ensuring that those are expanded moving forward. So that would kind of cover the legislative topics. On the third page is the regulatory priorities, and you just had a discussion about this accountability and accreditation and how the board should be taking its lead in aligning accountability and accreditation, recognizing the legislature has done its part. It's now your part to review the regulations to ensure that what is accreditation and accountability are well-aligned. So the Legislative Committee already identified the discussion you just had five to 10 minutes ago that needs to happen. So as I said, some of this is coming from multiple committees. The last one is in our early childhood education, and that's about the need for flexibility for certification if needed for staff that is needing to be addressed and is being worked on. And finally, dealing with educator preparation and certification, your ability through regulations to provide for reciprocity, to provide alternate routes to becoming a teacher and administrator in those topical areas. So those are the big picture issues. The committee today went through this. They did spend a great deal of time on the words that are in this document, recognizing there may still be some tweaks to it. So I think I turn it back over to the Chair of the Committee for further comments.
Thank you, Brian. And I, I do think it's important that we did as a committee just make some changes. So if you see a few little edits that need to happen, well, that's what happens when your committee's ending 10 minutes before this meeting starts. So there are, there is a little bit of editing. But as Brian shared, and I think to, to present from a committee perspective, this is a communication document for us that helps us align vision and direction as it relates to our legislative direction from a policy perspective and our regulatory direction. And that we want to communicate that out, that there are some things that we do need to work with the legislature to, to do in partnership with the legislature to make education more effective and to create more educational opportunities in Nebraska. And that's the first two pages. Then there are things that we can do that, and that we should do. And those are regulatory priorities that we don't necessarily need any statutory changes to happen. There are things that, that we own the responsibility of and need to take the responsibility of. So this document communicates out a little bit of the direction for both what we need to do in partnership with the legislature to make some things happen and what maybe we just need to prioritize and make happen. So with that, are there any questions?
Not a question. I just want to tell you, on the early childhood regulatory priorities, that discussion is also happening in the Commission. And in fact, they were having that discussion this morning while I was in these committee meetings. But I will keep you informed with the information I get from them so that we don't, aren't going in opposite directions.
Rachel, please.
I'm sorry. I don't know who to turn to. But I just want to thank the entire committee for being proactive. So many times, things go to the legislature without communication and might come out of the legislature in a different form than what might be a positive direction at times. And so I think by working together with a partnership with the legislature and having them understand the educational view and asking questions and answering questions back and forth so that what happens in education is best for all kids. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I agree with what she said as well. Thank you. I mean, this is pretty amazing to just sit down and look at this and think this should guide us in so many ways. I want to look at, just for understanding, my personal understanding under the college career and civic readiness, the second bullet monitors and ensures adherence to revised statutes through regulations established by the State Board instead of criminal sanctions. That is a huge leap, and I have a little trouble making the leap.
Currently, there's a series of state statutes that the legislature's been debating the last two or three sessions. Their enforcement mechanism is it's a classified misdemeanor. You have to go to a criminal prosecutor to bring criminal charges to enforce the provisions that are identified. And I think from the board's perspective and the Commission, that's not the approach.
Give me an example of what you would do to make that leap, that.
Can, can you share also a little bit of the history and even when that statute was passed? So that we just put it in context
Sure.
of the statutory requirements currently in place.
Right. So most of you, probably if I said the Americanism statute, will know immediately. That statute's enforcement is a criminal penalty that can only be enforced by, in this state, either the Attorney General or county attorneys to prosecute the named school officials in that. You, by the way, are a named potential criminal. If you don't carry out your rules, this board got an AG's opinion years ago about how what you had put in Rule 10, you've done your job. But that's the inherent flaw. That statute and its provisions, I believe, are 1947 and 1949. Many would say that was the era of McCarthyism. And so in that regard, as you're well aware, because we've responded to numerous bills the last couple legislative sessions, I think this is an attempt to better frame what, how better to do things. I don't think there's disagreement necessarily that that statute needs some refinement. So it's trying to speak in a more positive respect as to how better to do civics and civic readiness. It's not just knowing facts. It's also the ability to interact, knowing how to vote, do all of those activities, and being engaged in having conversations. You should know because you, Senator Grony came over and engaged you in a civic conversation on this very topic. That's the whole point of civic engagement. It's more than just little things. So that's what the concept is trying to capture.
My mind didn't go to that topic. I couldn't figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, Molly.
On our Spark Data meeting, we had the original document from our Legislative Committee. Can you just make sure that the board also has a digital copy besides this? Because it, it would be easy if we wanted feedback, that they could just take the digital copy, make suggested improvements. And I don't know if you want to put that on the Legislative Committee, just under this bullet point?
As the Chair of the Committee just recognized, this document got completed while Lane was doing his presentation on AQuest. So that's how quickly, it hasn't yet been attached in Spark, but we will get it attached right here in Spark.
And that might help our viewing public
Absolutely.
in case they want to see our updates, too.
Any other, other comments? Patrick?
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, I think what we're going through is really fascinating compared to what we've done as a Legislative Committee in the past. We never had a, we never had an agenda before. Our, our Legislative Committee was basically reactive. We reacted to bills that were introduced. I think this board and the Legislative Committee has made tremendous progress in becoming much more proactive and doing what I think is a really important job in the future. So, thank you.
Any other? Seeing here none? Thank you, Brian. In regards to Maureen, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
Well, our committee meeting included updates from committee member Lisa Fricki and NDE staff members. And I want to thank all of our committee and staff members for being there to contribute. Lisa updated the committee about the importance of teacher prep programs, informing teacher candidates regarding issues related to students and trauma. The committee emphasized the need to connect all the conversations currently happening around this topic, not just locally but nationally, and possible policy implications for the board to consider in the future. Another update we had was Dr. Epler and staff member Harris Payne discussed the process and timeline for the Social Studies Standards Revision. The committee will, will continue this discussion item next month and likely bring back something in the board at that time. Dr. Epler also provided an update on the department's progress with the Reading Improvement Act. The committee asks, has asked Dr. Epler to come back in the next month or two for more discussion, and we may bring something back to the full board at that time. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you very much. Molly, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting.
Yeah, there we go. You want me to go right into action items?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So let's go to 3.5A. This is to authorize the Commissioner to contract with Stone Network Incorporated to provide transcription services for DDS. And Kristi's in the room. Is Kristi in the room? No, Kristi's not in the room. Okay. With this action item, I'm sorry, Kristi's not here, but the transcription services, we as a committee agreed to support this action item. And if you have any questions, Kristi's not here to answer them, but if you look at the transcription services rationale, let's go to that. It's just the Disability Determination Section on behalf of Social Security Administration regarding eligibility of residents for the benefits. And I don't think, I don't think I asked Kristi to be here, but it's on my notes, so I apologize. Let's go to, yes? Yeah.
I remember from the meeting that the transcription is from doctors that are determining the disabilities, and it's required that they hire someone to transcribe that information into their documents. And so they found this group, and the group was the right price and the right group.
Okay. And Pat?
And there was a contract that essentially was led last month, and, or whether it was led or not, we talked about it. And the vendor did not actually qualify once they reviewed it. There were RFPs sent out on it, and we went to the second lowest bid.
Yeah. Comment?
Yeah, well, and so I can speak to this, but I think the two board members made it absolutely clear this was a process where an RFP was done. Bids were submitted. They reviewed bids. Originally, the so-called lowest responsible bidder was selected. That price was supposed to be less than the $50,000 threshold. When they started to do the work, they did their due diligence and discovered that that entity did not meet the Social Security Administration's requirements. Stone Network is currently the contractor, and the price for this contract is less than the contract they currently have with us. So I think it shows that the department's staff did its due diligence to both find effective and efficient services that are necessary for DDS. So I think that if the committee is supporting this, that's.
Yeah, we're supporting it. And also, I thought it was really interesting that you don't always get the best product with the lowest bid. It was really good that we went through and got the second lowest, still at a less price. And just as a heads up, there, there are over, over 10 action items. So I'll try to, in compliance with John, I'll try to hit the highlights. And if a staff member doesn't happen to be here, we'll just ask for a fill-in. So let's go to 3.5B. This is to authorize the Commissioner to move grants to issue number three, NE issue number six for coach collaboration pilot project. And Mel, Melody's supposed, Melody is here. Okay. That's good. And Melody's going to come just do a brief preset, and then if you have any questions, we can ask Melody.
Hi, Melody Hobson. I am the Administrator for the Office of Early Childhood Education. This item is, like we said, to, to do a coach collaboration pilot in the ESU six area and the ESU three, each of six, five, six, four, five, and six, and three. So it's the eastern part of the state. It is for a number of programs, provide coaching in early childhood areas. And so this would be kind of a state infrastructure to assist those coaches to get, to continue to be effective coaches and help provide the coaches with the support they need, and then to look at ways that the coaching initiatives can, can be efficient and not duplicate services to early childhood programs. It is a 21-month pilot. It is, it is being funded through Federal Health and Human Services, CCDF money.
Are there any questions? All right. I did want to let you know that the committee recommends this. Thank you, Melody. And now we'll move to 3.5C. This is to authorize the Commissioner to prove a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Department of Health and, Melody, don't leave, and Human Services for the support of early childhood education. And so, Melody?
Okay. And this is something that you've probably seen me here before to do. We do work continuously with the Department of Health and Human Services. It is in statute that NDE and HHS work together for these, this money. The money comes from Federal Health and Human Services Office, and it is a part of a larger pot of money that pays for childcare subsidy. There is a smaller pot of, a percentage of it that is a quality set aside for training and for support of early childhood providers. And we have worked for, since like 1990, to, to be that support for the state. This money pays for a number of staff positions, and the, it pays for a lot of the things that we do. This is something that we do pretty much with every year's money. And so because of the way the money was allocated and because of the systems, we'll be asking for board approval for the, for the fiscal year 2017 money and the fiscal year 2018 money at the same time.
Thank you very much. And I just, the committee supports this and recommends approval. And again, we wanted to highlight the alignment across the state boards, that Health and Human Services is working with NDE to make this happen in early childhood. Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Melody. 3.5D. And now we are having a staff member come up. Jan is going to be speaking of this. This is to authorize the Commissioner to contract with the University of Nebraska to provide statewide evaluation services for grant programs. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you. I'm Jan Hand. I'm the State Coordinator for the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant Program. It's kind of a mouthful. But we are authorized through ESA. We're Title IV Part B. It's a federal competitive grant program to fund after-school and summer programming in buildings that serve students that otherwise may not have these opportunities. We have been awarding grants for 16 years, and Monroe Meyer Institute has been our statewide evaluator from the very beginning. And they have grown and evolved and. from the very beginning. And they have grown and evolved and pushed us as we, in the very beginning, started with a continuous improvement process model way back in 2002. And we're very pleased with the work that they have done for us at what we feel is a very reasonable cost. I did put out an RFI, Request for Information, back in the spring to find out if any others would be interested in applying to be our statewide evaluator, and the only respondent was Monroe Meyer Institute. So, I had one contact from another national organization that asked some questions, but they did not go any further than that. So, I just would like to tell you who we serve in the program, because I think that does really weigh into the work, the really vital work that they're doing as far as our evaluation model. We serve about almost 20,000 students last year, and the grants are awarded out to 135 sites all across Nebraska. And their budgets are approximately $5.4 million, which is another reason why I feel that this contract is very reasonable for the size of, of the program and the work that we're expecting. But last year, 74% of the students in our programs were eligible for free or reduced lunch. 15% were English learners. 59% were an ethnic minority. 17% were verified for special education. And last year, for the first time, we took a look at migrant students, and 1% of the students that were regular attenders are migrant students. We have really taken to heart, last fall, the state board adopted a position statement on expanded learning opportunities, and Katie was nice enough to give us a wonderful graphic. But these are the principles that we are wrapping ourselves around as far as what is a quality out-of-school-time program, and these all incorporate the tenants of AQuest. So, this contract this year is slightly higher than a normal year, because we have used some of our state technical assistance dollars to develop an observation tool that we'll be piloting this upcoming year, first and second semester in our programs. And so, we're, we're bearing the cost of developing that tool and the travel expenses and the refining of that tool. And then, in the 1920 year, that will be rolled out to all of our grantees. And they will have an external observation done at least two out of the five years of their grant, and those costs will be absorbed by the programs using 21st Century Grant Dollars.
My gosh, the, I, the committee does, did recommend approval of this. And Jan, thank you so much. She's really, when you looked at the demographics, did you hear, I mean, when we look at targeted support of improvement, I think our expanded learning opportunities is going to really be help some of those subgroups that, and that they might struggle. So, thank you. Questions?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment.
Microphone.
We've talked on and off about public-private.
Yeah.
And I think expanded learning is probably one of the best examples in our state of public-private, because extension programs are used, 4H is used, humane societies are involved. I mean, it's just a very broad public-private effort.
They're required to have at least one community-based organization, but most of them have dozens of
Yeah, they do.
of outside partners that are helping.
John?
I'll be quick, Molly. Thank you very much. I'll just, I think we were all very much impressed with your economy of scale in regards to what you're doing with the amount that you have in regards to the 134, 135 sites that you are working. That's really commendable, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's wonderful, Jan. Thank you so much. We'll go now to 3.5E. This is to accept grant from the United States Department of Agriculture for meal service training grants. And Zainab, she's here, will share more information. And this is exciting. This is cool, too.
Good afternoon. Zainab Redad, Team Nutrition, Nutrition Services. NDE Nutrition Services received a two-year grant from USDA to work closely with early childhood facilities that participate in child food program, basically to provide education and support promotion, healthy eating, and a healthy environment in early childhood. In the next two years, we will provide regional trainings and focusing on a developing menu, healthy menu for the early childhood. We're gonna also develop videos, how to demonstrate those recipes, and focus on skilled-based outcomes. We will also provide many training and how to, not only like provide the menu for the early childhood, but also to support what we've been doing currently with strengthening the environment of early childhood. And I'm gonna pause here. If you have any questions, to the next two items.
Okay, she's on a number of agenda items, but I just wanted you to hear her speak one time. Zainab is doing so much to integrate the, the healthy needs of all children. But in the early childhood, when you go to all those different presentations, they talk about how the brain architecture forms and how important it is to educate the families about proper eating.
Absolutely. So, we're targeting not only childcare providers, we're targeting parents and the community as well.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you so, so much, Zainab. And then, let's go to 3.5F. This action item is to authorize commissioner to contract with Nebraska Association of Local Health Directors to oversee a CDC grant activities. We recommend this. If you have, Zainab, I didn't ask her to speak, but if you have any questions, she can answer. All right, we'll move to the next one. 3.5G. This is to authorize the commissioner to contract with Christina Berger to provide team nutrition grant support, and we do recommend this action item as well. Do you have any questions for Zainab? We'll go to the next one then.
Thank you.
3.5H, thanks so much, Zainab. Authorized Commissioner to approve a cooperative agreement with the issue 10 for transition system support. And we did recommend this. And Amy is here, if, if you have questions. I didn't ask her to speak on this, but she's available. We did recommend this action item. 3.5.1. This is to authorize the commissioner to fund the Weststat Incorporated Nebraska Technical Assistance Project. And Amy's in the room, too. And Steve, if you have any questions? No? We'll go to the next action item. And I'm gonna have them both come up. You probably have noticed that we're having a lot of special ed action items. And I thought it was really informative that Ryan pointed out that we are going to try to, at the beginning inception of these, really explain what these are, and then, they might be on the consent agenda in further times until the four-year renewal date comes up. But I did think you might real, you'd benefit if they talked about all of them. But they're going to actually talk about funding a cooperative agreement with the University of Nebraska to fund the multi-tiered system of support implementation, implementation support team. And if we could just take a moment, and look at these two fine people, Steve Milliken and Amy Rowe. They held the MT, Nebraska MTSS Summit, and there were over 750 people there. And they stayed, most of them for all three days. And they were so dynamic and inclusive. And I think Patsy said it best, and Lisa, she was there, and John was there as well, when you said, "This is about all students." So, take it away. Tell us a little bit about this action item and how it relates to board interest.
Okay, so, the action item is actually to grant the commissioner the authority to grant money to the University of Nebraska here at Lincoln. We, for 12 years now, have granted money to the university to provide supports around multi-tiered systems of support through an implementation support team. And we, over those 12 years, have been in over 240 school buildings. So, we support teams through schools, not districts. So, it may look different in every single district, but that's quite a few. This last two years, we've really branched out and broadened what we're doing, and that implementation support team will also be really focusing their efforts this year on looking at the legislative, the Reading Improvement Act that we're moving forward with to really provide supports around identifying evidence-based practices that are in school districts or maybe not in school districts and should be in school districts, and helping them to lead to better core instruction and instructional strategies. We're also working, not only with the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, but all of our higher ed, to provide better supports to those teacher preparation programs so that they are truly being effective in their teaching instructional practices and strategies. So, this grant has increased each year, because each year, we plan on improving the efforts that we have coming out of the department, but also our implementation support team efforts as well.
Very good. If I expand, yeah, no, no, no. The conference that we just held, I'm gonna give Amy great credit for that. It was like almost 800 people, and about 80% of them were over gen ed, so, across the board for all students. It was pretty, pretty incredible and tremendous, tremendous feedback from all educators. Great communication with, with the commissioner on that as well. We had the Iowa Department of Ed spending some time with, with the commissioner and others. So, it was a great, great two and a half days.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments from my friends? Go ahead. Lisa?
I know. I just want to thank you again for that. I just want to make sure I understood from the day that you go in and one year, you're training them and getting everybody on board, and then the next year is implementation. Is that correct, of the MTSS, when you go into a brand-new school district?
Yeah, it honestly depends. Every single school in Nebraska is doing multi-tiered systems of support. It probably looks different. It's maybe called something different. But what is unfortunate is some districts don't really realize or know that they are, or sometimes their practices aren't evidence-based, aren't research-based. So, really, it's helping them identifying some of those things. And especially in a needs improvement school, helping them to identify strategies that may help them to not be needs improvement or help them to stay good, great, or excellent.
Okay.
And utilizing those schools that are in practices that are effective to teach our other schools how that can be. So, our implementation support team works with all levels of schools, but may take experts from one school district in northern Nebraska and take them down to southern Nebraska to help them collaborate and work together, because that's really what's effective is, the practices that are working in Nebraska.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? I do have two comments. Number one is, could you make sure that, on the NDE website, you have the Nebraska MTSS website that is available to everyone, to individuals and to the public? Because it's, it's like open source. And it might be helpful of the representatives here, if they have it on our, on our board documents as well. And then, also, have you been in conversation with Laine about using MTSS with the targeted support and improvement, TSI, when you have a low-performing subgroup, so you can be using MTSS with TSI?
Yes, lots of communication. We actually are working, myself and several others from our implementation support team sit on that committee that works with REL to begin the development of our comprehensive needs assessment. We're also working very hard with Teaching and Learning and Assessment to build out the ideas around what schools are really needing to look at for their materials matter and really focusing on all of that core instruction, because all means all. And regardless of if the student has a disability or not, everyone should be receiving quality education in Nebraska.
Amen. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate your, we definitely recommend that. And we will move now to 3.5L. And you can sit there, but you don't have to talk, because your names are on the next three. So, this action item is to authorize the commissioner to fund projects, entities listed in attachment in the provision of federally required IDEA, IDEA part C duties. Our committee recommends L. Any questions? 3.5M. This action item is to authorize the commissioner to contract with Utah State University for services that support Nebraska's special ed education programs. The committee recommends this. Any questions? Let's now move to 3.5N. This is to authorize commissioner to fund the Paraeducator Self-Study Program, UNL Project Para. And this is so cool. I did ask Steve to talk about this a little bit.
And this is, thank you. And this is not a new project. Been going on for quite some time. Yeah, a long time, right, Rachel?
A long time, that is correct.
That's right. So, but, yes, and an online training project primarily. And it's really focused on our paraeducators across the state. And the great conversation we had earlier was the fact that the paraeducators are such an important part of what we do within all education, but really specifically within special education as well, for all the diverse needs that we have. The training that we can provide to our paraeducators are just incredibly important. And, and many times, the quality paraeducators have interest in moving on to be certified and in special education. And with the shortage that we have in some areas, we've had some conversation about creating a pipeline, if you will, from the paraeducator to being able to support individuals that are paraeducators to maybe get certified in special ed. And we'll continue to have more conversations about that. But the good thing is, these, this kind of program really helps keep our good paras in place. We have a pretty, statewide, pretty good turnover, because sometimes the pay could be questionable and, and so forth. So, the training is to really ensure that they have the skills needed to do so, so.
And this is really a shout-out to those paraeducators. If you look in your schools, some of our high-needs students need these paras, and it's very grueling work, but very rewarding. And I love it that they're getting mentoring and then the ones that are interested to be into certification. And I apologize, team, but I'm going to have to go back. We recommend, we recommend this, this action item. But I skipped 3.5K. So, do you mind if we go back to that just for a moment? This is to authorize the commissioner to fund the Modified Promoting Engagement and Knowledge Projects, also known as PEAK. And, and Amy's, Amy's still here, so do you have any questions on that one? No? Okay. So, I've gone through all my action items, and I want to go on record. The very first one we had, 3.5. A, if Christie Mitchell is listening somewhere in this building, I didn't ask her to come. So, she was not absent. It was, I didn't ask her to be here. So, my apologies to Christie. Are there any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Molly. Just one quick statement. Steve, could you just give a quick briefing to the board regards the factors this morning you identified as identification rates, like 15% here? I thought that was most interesting, and the board may be finding it interesting also.
With Iowa and Kansas, those triple.
The question was our identification rate in the state of Nebraska for kids with disabilities. So, that's across all 13 disability categories, and we run just under about 15%. Question related to our neighboring states. And we do run, we do run high compared to, we were talking specifically about, for instance, Iowa and Kansas. Not exceptionally high, but we are, we are higher than them. The national average now is just a little over 12%. One of our areas of real, real focus and conversation has been on the learning disability category. That is our biggest category. That's nationally, that's the biggest category. But ours has continued to increase some, and that's somewhat inconsistent with the national, as there has been decrease. The, it's consistent, however, though, with our, looking at Reading Improvement Act and MTSS, where we really engage and engage early as far as kids who may be struggling to read and with systems built to intervene early, so they are not necessarily later identified as special education, SLD. And so, there's some, a lot of the good things going on for us to take a good look at that.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Molly.
And, and before we leave, we have some questions, so.
Thank you, John. You just then started a whole.
We could probably talk about this.
You want this to be, yeah. This was a work session, right?
I mean, that's great information. Have you broken that information down in looking at age of identification and how that may compare differently in states? Do we have a greater number of students who are identified at, let's say, age maybe 10, 11, 12, 13, 14? And how does that compare to other states? And I ask that only because of whether or not we are not maybe doing different things from an early identification perspective, and that maybe some of our identification practices tend to be a little later, and if that increases the numbers.
Yeah, first of all, I don't want to overstate that identification, that we're, you know, that we're scary in our, in our identification. That's just not the case. We are, you know, we're a little bit higher and so, and we have noticed that with some national information that we have looked at. And yes, regarding specific to the learning disability category, we haven't necessarily looked specifically. We've had some information as we look at other states, but most of our identification, as we still use so much is the discrepancy model, and many of the identification of kids does come at the third and fourth grade level. And many of the identification of kids does come at the third and fourth grade level. Which then doesn't give us as much ability to intervene with quality interventions at that point.
So I would ask President Whitzel if maybe we could come back to this topic and at some point? And you bring some additional information? Because you've now piqued my interest on that of looking at some of the age, looking at the fact and maybe giving a little information on how our model is different than other models would be good for us to learn as board members. And then the other piece also, and just because I have not been, you know, following special education processes as much. Are the other states birth to twenty-one or are all states birth to twenty-one now? Or many still three to twenty-one? That's another important factor. Because Nebraska should be proud of our long history in being a birth to twenty-one state in identification versus a three to twenty-one.
And one of the pieces that we'll bring back to you later is the exiting information. So sometimes our numbers may look inflated because we maybe don't do as great of a job of exiting kids that need to be exited. Whereas a birth mandate state does allow us to intervene early. We also need to really look at our practices for not making it a life sentence for kids and really giving them what they need and then scaling back as they need it as well.
Any other questions, Lisa?
I'm very interested in the para program. Last summer.
Last summer, I learned about a para program from Midland College that met in Omaha, where it was a cohort of paras leading into teaching. Are, how many, or approximately, how many of those types of cohorts are around the state? Are they out in the rural areas like Kearney, Pearl Hadron?
The cohorts of?
Para, you know, where they have this pathway from being a para and there's money, you know, that is involved.
Scholarship.
They help them out with. I thought it was a wonderful program. I'm just wondering, is it, you know, are other colleges doing this? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the other universities have. That is exactly though what we have had conversation about is developing the interest from paras. But more formalizing it, if you will, to create the pathway to certification in special education. If that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
I'm not familiar with it, maybe you or Amy, as far as cohorts outside of the, outside of necessarily the metro area. But, but when we get further west, I don't want to get into too much stuff here. But the, that's where we do look at a number of shortages within special ed. And so that's where we really do need to tap quality paras that are already working in our special education programs. There's no question about that.
All right. Thank you for that.
And utilizing an online system would be the most beneficial just because the proximity for which those individuals can get to college classes is somewhat difficult.
And just as a closing, before we move on out of this committee, what I really liked about the Nebraska MTSS, it's all based on sound evidence and analytics and metrics. So Brian, as we are advancing ESSA and the integration with Aquest, I think we've really got to keep eye on the data from Nebraska MTSS. Because that will actually show, we were talking about if you really do that right, that kids will exit out. And it'll be almost a good indicator for classification to school too. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you very much, ma'am. The board will take a ten-minute break.
Thank you very much.